Ten thirty AM on Monday, the twentieth of February. This is the high like called order, the inaugural meeting. Of the vectors. Welcome, everybody. We have a quorum. I will. I'm getting a message here. My internet connection is unstable. We have a forum here. Uh, just, I just named the names and we'll, you know, have little introductions, maybe personal introductions. David Pearson, Art Chapman, our Chapman, Rhonda, Gordon Heinrichs and Tony Stafford. Have all graciously consented on this committee and serve the serve Cambria in this way or all have a lot. All of you have some quite a bit of relevant experience. I don't have a chair's report per se, but. The end of the meeting during the agenda, agenda items, talk a little bit about where we, where we go from here. We have a, we have a pretty, actually a pretty substantial agenda today to get through. And we'll be doing things in the coming year, uh, this year, uh, having to do more. Subcommittee level. For now, I think we'll be. Killing with the regular business today and. Before that. We have election committee officers, which also seem to right now. Now there's two officers to, to shoot. Uh, one of them is the vice chair. Who is the, does two things mainly is the stand in for, for me, the chair when I'm not here and also participates in a gender review. Meaning that when every, every month before our meeting, it's usually two weeks, we have a short meeting. By a, by a zoom with, with Chief, Chief Berkey. Who, um. We, we go over the agenda for the coming meetings. So it's basically a commitment of a, of a half hour or so. Two weeks before the meeting, which should be around, around the first Thursday of the month. And the other, so the other job is secretary. Which means taking minutes and, uh, you may have seen the minutes and of course, uh. David, David is very familiar with this, but you may have seen the minutes of committees, uh, from other, other committees, you know, the finance committee, which I share. They are, uh, basically, they don't have to be too detailed, extremely detailed as what the discussion was about, what people said and, and what. You know, commenters said, you do have to get the, um. Uh, descriptions very precise of, of what was moved, what was moved, what was approved, what wording was saying in a, in a staff, in a proposal was changed. Things like that for the record, but you don't, you're not doing a trans meetings are recorded and then posted online. Line, uh, shortly after the end. So you don't have to get into this, into the little details of who said what, but we do have to have a record. A reliable record of the, of what we did, our actions. So they're called action minutes essentially. So with, uh, having said that. I'll open the nominations first for vice chair. Who wants to volunteer? Who wants to name somebody?
I'll nominate David Pearson.
Any second to that? Second, okay, it's been seconded, it's been moved to seconded by move by, um, uh, Mr. Stafford and second to Mr. Heinrichs that, uh. David Pearson be named the, um, vice chair. He's consenting to do it, I guess. I, yeah, that's why I wait. Uh, I'll take a roll call. It's, um. Mr. Stafford, I, Mr. Heinrichs, I, Mr. Deluga, I, Mr. Chapman, I, and Mr. Person, I, so David Pearson is now vice chair. Which means he won't be secretary because he can't have two jobs. Not for secretary, which involves some work during the meeting and then turning in minutes. Of the meeting to just Dodson afterwards. And I tend to use those minutes in my report as sort of basis for the report that I do amplify on. You don't have to do everything this in my report to the board. So, uh. First of all, does anyone want? To be. Secretary and there are motion to make someone secretary, either or. It's always helpful if somebody volunteers because. Somebody has to be secretary.
Some of ours would be a good one. Or even, yes, well, probably I have, I have, I'm hard of hearing and so I, I worry about picking up the details.
Okay. We have here.
Not that good with details.
The only details really are, I like when we do it. Today, for instance, we'll be talking about the, um. Uh, the, uh. Redebate ordinance and there'll be, we're discussing the language of it quite a bit. So if there's a motion made to approve, recommend approval with these changes. You got, they, those are the changes you want to write down. Now, it's not necessarily just the secretary's job, but my job too. But those are the things, that's the kinds of things you need to know. You don't need to know everything that's going on. So. Or here. Lot of material here.
My writing. It will be my favorite spot. Let's put it that way. And I don't do well with spelling. I'm an engineer. I'm a writer.
How art, how about, uh?
Well, I am a little policy. Um, it's, uh, I, I, I wouldn't need help. Uh, I may miss details. Mm hmm. It works and such. So if I do it, it'll, um, it'll be a. It'll be a group effort.
These are, sorry, yeah, these are also recorded. So you can go back and listen to them, which might help as well. That's exactly what I was going to say too. You can go back to the recording and, and, uh, listen to the meeting again or parts of the meeting you're wondering about. Before you turn the minutes and officially official minutes and, yeah, in preparing the minutes, you can refer to anything that was said and you can listen to it repeatedly just to make sure you get it right. So don't, so not to worry. I mean, if, if you don't get everything right exactly in your notes here, uh, you can always, as Mr. Matt Lanning said, you can shut and go back.
All right, no.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, in the nomination here, thank you, Art, because it's, yeah, we got, uh, Mr. Heinrichs not, um, moves to not, uh, appoint. I'll second, and Mr. Luca seconds has been moved and seconded that our Chapman be appointed the secretary of the committee for the role, uh, Mr. Heinrichs.
Yes.
Mr. Luca, I, Mr. Severn, I, Mr. Pearson, I, Mr. Chapman, Art. Okay. I did say I'd take a couple of minutes. Maybe it's an extension of the chair report for, for the people on this committee to introduce themselves. Let's go around. It's just so, just talk to who you are and what's your, you know, relevant background is and you don't have to go up to great length. But I think we should, the public should also get to know who you are. And we have a few, a fair number of people tuning in here. And number of people in the, uh, in hall and in the room. So maybe Mr. Pearson, this will go count of clockwise.
This is short. David Pearson, uh, I've been the moderator of the Cambria Fire Safety Focus Group for about six years, maybe seven. And I am a second vice president of the Slow Fire Safety Council.
I'm a property owner in Cambria and lived here for twenty five years. I live in, uh, upon that deal. Um, I've been, I was a member of the county civil service commission for eleven years. Until recently was, was an involved citizen.
You are now again.
That kind of pulled, pulled away until just now and still, uh, agreeing to come on this committee. Um, I worked for LA County, um, in HR administration for twenty five years. Uh, so we're for county, county. So. Contracts, done a lot of contract for publications.
Thank you. Luca.
Rhonda, I lived in Cambria since about nineteen eighty six. Recently retired from state service as a fire security officer at Castle. During that time I was the EMR instructor for the state. So I taught all the state parks. And it, it retired.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your service here. Mr. Heinrichs.
Gordon Heinrichs, I was with the initial starting of the, uh, policy committee five years ago. I was a, I knew starting one for this organization. So hopefully this will move along in five years to be very productive as politics committee was. And I'm a member of the Certs Castle organization for three years in Civil Air Patrol. Uh, for doing search and rescue for probably thirty years. And, um. Involved with the local community for fifteen years. We've lived here. And we had access to early seventies is when we built the first house here that I'm currently living in. So I'm definitely. Associated with the, uh, community to be more involved with the, the trees and those aspects that, that's were living amongst them.
Okay, thank you.
I am Tony Safford. I represent, have exactly humanity and their disaster services work in the state. I'm also increasingly active with the Red Cross and their. I am engaging in work, particularly here, uh, in Cambria. I'm on the board of, uh. California Go Ad, Go Ad is voluntary organizations active in disaster. I'm on the steering committee of our local Go Ad in Slow, representing our local habitat affiliate.
Thank you. Um, I just, I shall note, this is actually a very well attended meeting, uh, by standing committee standards. Uh, there are seven people online. Right now, uh, there's going to be Galore, Galloway, Christine Heinrichs, Pauline Laura Swartz, I see one, two for one there. David Van Lenny. Uh, Green Space, probably is Corinne. Um, Riley McFarlane. And then Spencer Gordon will hopefully be hearing from a little later. And I guess maybe briefly just, uh. The, the, the six, seven of you on the, on the rim there, maybe just say who you are and, and, uh. Most of you are pretty recognizable. Go ahead, Tony. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Tony Cook, a consultant.
Harry Farmer, the eight year resident of Cambria and, uh, on the board as directors of the CCSD and. Do other things I'm good.
Frank Brooks, fire captain with the Cambria Fire Department and vice president of the unit.
Michael Cossiano, seeing the president, also a fire captain here, uh, resident thirty six years.
Michael Thomas, uh, seven or eight years in Cambria, one of the directors on the CCSD ward and. Wanted to be here to just let you all know. Generally, I want to attend in person. I'll be watching on Zoom or the reporting when I can. Kind of get more out of it, but I just wanted to, you know, to make sure that I said here to y'all that I watch every one of these meetings. That we get from these ten four hours. The decisions we take. So thanks all.
Uh, David Gary with facilities and resource for, uh, CCSD. Dan Turner and the executive director of the County Fire Safety Council.
Here we have Chief Michael Birking. That's an official, since our general manager, Matt Mackler. I don't think every meeting will do this, but I think it's, it's interesting to see that set the tone for, um, future meetings and, uh, note how many people are interested in this, in this committee. Uh, I'll move on to public, the next section which is public comment. Now this is for, uh, anybody here or online can, um. Comment on an issue that is within the purview of the fire protection committee. Uh, but not on today's agenda. So we're not asking for comment at this point on item three, three B. Right now on high, I don't see any hands up. Does anybody wish to comment in? Mr. Turner.
Would this be a place to discuss the Cal Poly project and the, uh, CSD, uh, big slide?
The vacant lot clearance, um, is not on, yeah, I guess it is because we're not doing the vacant lot clearance specifically, are we per se? Yeah. It's just, go ahead. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So, uh. Talking a little bit about the Cal Poly proposal is coming up. Dr. Chris Dykes, who's a, uh, professor at Cal Poly teaches an annual, annually teaches a course in wild and urban interface fire protection. And in that core, as the student gets graduated and upper level, fourth year students. Kind of a capstone program. They put together all the things that they learned in their. I make Cal Poly and they take a class and break them into teams and, um. There, here, I'll read exactly what their problem statement is that they're given direction to do. So they have lectures and then they have labs and in the lab they fill. They'll put in the teams and they develop plans. So you are a member of a local consulting firm of officials from, um, in this case, Cambria. Have approached your firm with an offer to develop a community wildfire protection plan for the development around the community. Due to the potential for wildfire, which can readily threaten nearby structures and infrastructure. Further, they actually devise them on how to best communicate current situations and more by any more firewise environment, given socio-economic realities. So they have a whole list of things they have to do here. So essentially what they do. In this course is they develop a community wildfire protection plan. They teach the class once a year. Each year they pick a different community in the county. They visit that city, they learn what's going on in that community with the fire agency, this committee, fire safety focus group, other groups. Start to understand that social construct that's there and look at the physical problem that exists in the community and build maybe wildfire protective plan. Out of that and then present that plan to the community. So he's in class right now. So he asked me to represent him on this because I've actually taught this course before. When he's on sabbatical. So really interested in doing Cambria. It's actually done one of these once before, appeared like twenty years ago. Um, so it's a revisit, but talking to Chief Berkey and some of the other things we know about. There's a lot of activity going on in Cambria right now. The great opportunity for the students to learn about. Things this, this committee is doing, things that the focused fire safety focus group is doing, some of the fuel projects that are going on around the community, great learning environment for them. And he just asked me to, you know. Review on that, let you know that. The course starts. Starts, uh, but, and then finishes in June. So in ten weeks. They will learn about and develop and present the wildfire protection plan.
Thank you. Thank you. This is something that, uh, firstly focus group would be involved in lots of too. It's, uh, you know, interface with and we, you know, we, um. We hope, you know, this, this committee, thank you, um, Mr. Turner. It was very informative. This committee is. Because our purview is what the CCSD specifically can and can, has the power to do and, you know, has responsibility for, but we do want to, obviously, fire safety focus groups, um. We're on the same, we're, we're in the same, we're worrying in the same direction. We just have to, you know, make sure we're, um, doing our, not getting each other's way and also not duplicating. But yes, this is something that fire safety focus group would also be involved in. And I, but Dan, if, if everyone wants to know, Dan Turner is of course the. The chief kind of liaison to this fire safety focus group from the fire safety council. So is obviously the vice focus group is me on board of the two, same rate. Yeah.
Is there a current security? Uh, as Cal Fire defines it and all of it. Yes.
I think it's the one that was done like twenty years.
Yeah, that's on the records. Yeah. Yes. I mean, it has, there is.
At least.
Yeah.
So to what extent can this plan be rolled into a more formal?
So having taught this class before and seeing the product, there'll be three of them because each team will prepare one. And they all have a little different flavor and.
All three of them focused on Cambria?
All, all three teams will do the same community. And so. My recommendation was we would take all three of those and kind of blend into the, a single document, taking, you know, take the good parts out of each one of those. Uh, they're students that are, you know, they're learning. So there's some things in here. You go, really? You really said that? And then other things like, wow, that's brilliant. So it ranges from, you know, one and the other, but you can construct a little ball of this man. And, uh, and then it would be, in this case, um. Um, we would want to set the parameters of what the study zone looks like. Is it just the CSD boundaries? Or is it, you know, kind of the greater Cambria area where the fire threat is probably, I would recommend maybe the bigger that's the CSD boundaries? Because the threats some quite outside the boundary here too, with, without it getting so large that it gets unmanageable for them. And they would, I would know, uh, again, from past history. The redebate ordinance you're dealing with right now is right in their wheelhouse is the things they study. Is what is the community doing and mitigation measures and actions, you know, to mitigate the fire problem, whatever puts one on. And in a perfect world, they would actually come, class would come visiting here and they just, just get a sense of what that looks like as well as a focus group being. It's a matter of whether that works schedule wise. So. Dr. Dyke is so. Let us know their, I think they need, they have a four hour block time to their lab on Tuesday afternoon.
Coincidentally, there was a Cal Fire presentation on, on these bands yesterday. And one of the key aspects of it, uh, was, was, uh. How do you get community involvement and community buy-in?
Correct.
Uh, because we all know the facts. It's getting, getting us to the option. And, uh, the extent of this, these kids can, uh, motivate, help motivate the community, uh, would be really great.
That's great. And that's excellent. And, and you're, you're, you're just dead on is how do you get the community engaged in the process to both understand and implement? Uh, again, these students are learning. So, and they're getting ready to go to, in, out into the real world, out of the academic. Nirvana that they live in. So part of what they need is a real world experience of. Um, they're not in an echo chamber. They're going to deal with places that have different viewpoints, different opinions. They need to see and hear that. So they best understand when they hit the job, you know, what the job world that is. And how it is out here, you know, not everybody thinks alike. That's, anyway, I'll provide more of that coming along or Dr. Dyke is slow.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Um, any other public comment? Okay, let's move on to regular business. We have no consent agenda today because we have minutes to prove on previous meetings. It's beautiful what consent agenda is in these committees. So we'll go to a very regular business, item three A, which is the, um. Uh, discussion and consideration regarding introduction ordinance zero one, five, adding chapter six point oh five. The Cambria Community Services District Municipal Code regarding redebate standards. And we consider providing recommendations to the CCSD board directors. I'll turn this over to. Either, yeah, Chief Bridge. Do it, introduce it. And also we, we had, we had, you, you all have a copy of it hopefully. Do not, the hard copy is available of the, of the updated language.
Yes, there's, there's two that are provided. So the one that's in the agenda as I believe has been updated with some board input, I believe.
Uh, yeah.
And then there's another copy that I provided, uh, last evening as that states to that. So.
That's the one copies, that copy is one to make sure, make sure everybody has or some copy that's not in here.
I, I need the, okay. I could use one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got some topics too, just in case, but.
Thanks.
Wait, what did I say? Okay, so. So maybe give a little background on that. It's a, yeah, I, I recommended that everybody, hopefully everybody was able to, uh, see the meeting. The board meeting, I sent a email out with the, um, description, you know, showing, showing where on the tape this was discussed. So, yeah, maybe helps give a little background, but Chief, go ahead with.
Yeah, so the, the beginnings of this, uh, the, the purpose of this, uh, update ordinance was to. Uh, when we were going through the, uh, fire, the fuel reduction program, uh, which is just our redebate program to, that tackles mostly, uh. The, uh, vacant lots in Cambria. So what we were trying to do was to expand that a little bit because we were recognizing that or, uh, that. There were a lot of areas that weren't addressed in the current ordinance. And so we brought this forward to attempt to, um, to update those or improve our requirements to, to kind of. Address a lot of those issues. Uh, and obviously there, the, it needed some revision as we noted at the last board meeting. So, uh, it. It was decided to bring it before this committee to further those revisions and hopefully improve it to kind of what we, uh, were trying to get. That basically make it effective and make the point.
Uh, what's, what's your timeline for completing it?
As soon as possible, really, because we're trying to get this in, uh, back to the board for their next board meeting and then hopefully, uh, because we have to give the community time to, uh, I think it's a month, is that correct? To, to, once the board adopts it, then there's a thirty day window in which it actually becomes, you know, the ordinance, there's a thirty window there.
The next board meeting is March thirteenth and that, I think that's the plan is to have it voted on by the board on the thirteenth.
And then to expand on what the chief is saying. So. Uh, if you've lived here in Cambria long enough. Uh, Cal Fire, the state agency, we are in a state responsibility area. Had the primary, the primary responsibility for developer parcels. So when we talk about defensible space. Or a lot of community members come out and say, like so and so neighbor has, um, a very large lot. Or they cleared around the property, but if that property extends. And adjoins or is adjacent to other property owners and that's not redebated, there's been a lot of concern about that as everybody in Cambria knows in terms of fire threat. That responsibility has primarily been put on Cal Fire. Some of the issues that we've experienced is that Cal Fire will cite those property owners. Uh, if they continue to fail to comply with the defensible space, it can get referred to the district attorney's office, but the district attorney's office is not picking up these cases. Um, it, it's not a high priority for them. They've got other things going on. So it's, uh, it's a bit feckless in terms of the enforcement process. However. Within the last six months, the CCSD has adopted an administrative citation program. Which allows us to find financially these parcels that fail to comply with our municipal code. That's a hundred dollars a day, compounding until it's remedied. So there is a little more bite to that. Going back to what the chief was saying is that our municipal code really only identified those undeveloped parcels. And the standards for redebate there, but it didn't apply to develop parcels. So this is our. I wanted to correct you on that really quick. And so that's where, so we did, uh, um. But we, we adopted the fire code, um, in its, in its entire, including chapter forty nine and chapter forty nine, uh, addresses it, it absolutely, um, it's kind of a newer. Addition to the California Fire Code, but so what Cal Fire usually uses, the, this is a public resources code fourteen to ninety one, and that addresses, uh, defensible space. The California Fire Code more or less duplicated that in chapter forty nine. They said that this is now a part of that. This is something that if you adopt this code in its entirety, we have the ability to do that. And so as of right now, with the administrative citation program, we have the ability to enforce, um. The defensible space, uh, by penalty of, uh, so. This ordinance that we're looking at, and that's where these revisions needed to happen, where was more geared toward. Because defensible space only goes so far. So what we have a problem here in Cambria is, uh, homes or, uh, developed parcels that have. Bought or, um, acquired merged lots around their property. So maybe one or two lots were merged. It comes off of our. We, we debatement program, it's done. And now we don't, we don't address it other than that border that's around the residence itself, resonance itself. This is meant to. Kind of. Improve from the roadway, from, from accessways that there, there's, there's still that perimeter that's being, uh, kind of abated. And so that, that was really the purpose. And then we have a lot of large properties out in, uh, north kind of the northern area.
Right.
Right, that, that we wanted to kind of address in those areas as well. And so that was really what the, the direction of this was, although I, I, you know, in the, the initial, uh, draft of this. The defensible space was mentioned in there. And I think it was just an oversight on my part, honestly. Um, but. Because it was not, we don't really need that in, in the ordinance. We already have it. It's already adopted by the fire code. We already have the administrative citation program. That was, there's no need to duplicate that in that aspect.
That was one of my major concerns when I read this.
Yeah.
Um. So. Well, I need to, I need to read the updated.
If you look at the updated, that's what I tried to provide was if you look at the updated, one, uh, removed some of the language that was in there, uh, regarding the trees. I know that was a big issue at the board meeting. Also, it kind of just simplified what the direction of the, this ordinance was meant to do. It basically says in the first two. First line there, um, I'm just not, but, um. Essentially, uh, it's six, six oh five, four zero, uh, the property owners and the district shell, I updated this as a part, um. So section A there, maintain. So section A there, maintain property as outlined in the chapter forty nine of the fire, California Fire Code, section forty nine oh six and forty nine oh seven. Those are, that's the defensible space, and then essentially the next portion which we're we're really looking for.
I I'm sorry, what what's where are you in the in the proposal portion?
So it's like a page, what, three?
Oh, we've talked about.
The third, the third page in the document is kind of there at the bottom, right?
Oh, we are talking about four oh, but standards.
Correct.
Standard.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, so if you it it if you compare it to the first one, if the first standards mentioned a lot, again, it was just duplication of a lot of the uh. Requirements that are found in chapter forty nine of the fire.
And just to clarify for me, um but since I haven't looked at chapter forty nine. Um Cal Fire has. Provisions for you, you know. For defensible space. Their recommendations um on their website. Are are those codified in chapter forty nine?
Yeah, correct, they are, and they're mentioned in there, yeah, and they are, they're basically duplicated. But. Chapter forty nine, and I've got a copy of that here too, I gotta buy that. Um but it does, it it outlines the defensible space and it outlines that uh. The public resource code forty two ninety one has been. Essentially adopted by the California Fire. More or less.
Okay. I got, I took a screen grab of. Of chapter forty nine oh six and forty nine oh seven.
I've got that as well.
Yeah. Around, actually, if people want it.
Yeah, and I've also got forty two ninety one here as well.
It's accessible online?
It's accessible online, you go to find law or whatever. One of those, the problem, the problem is, as I noticed, is that there's a lot of reference to other. It incorporates other. Sections of other codes by rep, you know, references, you 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 can get it all, you can put it all together, a certain amount of work. It's not all there in front of you.
Having, having jumped into this in the middle of it without. Having been involved in fire save council or or other um. Other agencies and and um I was trying to under, I'm trying to understand. All of that because it gets built into the regulator, it gets built into this specific section. And we want to make sure that it's inclusive. And then from that, you will have to develop. We regulations or provisions that you. Can. Publish to the. Public. And that. And that those that. That inspect. Properties. Will be able to use as. As as clear. Provisions for what. Folks have to do to to um. To comply.
Yeah, and then so to be, if I'm being completely honest, we don't even need to put, since we've already adopted the fire code, this was the twenty twenty two edition, I believe. Once we adopted that, it code in its entirety. This provision doesn't even, the 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 stating in in this particular provision that we need, that we've adopted that were. Um eighteen forty nine oh six, forty nine oh seven, we're already doing that, those are already, but this is just. An attempt to clarify that for this.
Well, that helps me.
Yeah, and 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 again, it's just a reference, much as the California Fire Code has done for the public resource code. It's just a reference to that code. And again, it yeah, it does require some digging to find that, but again, we use that. As the fire department, we do that every day when we're doing that, you know, defensible space inspections and all of that, that's the, it it just is telling us where. Sorry, and that's common practice for a lot of the things that we do in the district when we reference uh. Public code.
Yeah.
Or or state statute, we'll reference the code instead of inserting the code. Into the actual document, so that's kind of what the chief is doing here is referencing the code, then you go to the code and they'll outline those standards. And then when we get to a point where this has been established, we'll reference it on the website, we'll have access links on the website where the public would know those standards. Uh our firefighters are. Very well in tune with those standards when it comes to.
So essentially, this gives you the, it buttons up all the, any uh, any issues, any questions, it gives you the. The framework to do what you need to do.
Yes.
And there are various pieces of this existing, so at some point, you you do need to. Lay it out in a uh in a public presentation, so the totality of. Your authorities. Clear, and the actions of homeowners are clear.
And under the administrative citation program, we're required to. List those, like if there was a citation or a violation, that we're required to give them those violations in there and where those are found, so if it was a violation, then we're required. To present that to them when we uh. Essentially cite them. Um but in the meantime, yeah, again, uh it it is, you know, I don't know what we're required to do legally as far as um. You know, clarify all these, as long as, again, this is mentioned in there and any updates or changes. And when we, when we do our ordinances, again, since we've, we've adopted the fire code, this ordinance. Is more to be a um. An addendum to it, or, you know, to to provide any gaps in those areas.
Focused on the. Focus on who is. Uh the inclusion of developed property. Is key thing, right, he's a crucial thing.
It isn't really. Explicit.
Well, it's in, it's in.
It um, I mean, yeah, once you read through it, you can, it it took me. It took me uh uh three readings to figure out. Where we were incorporating the abatement. Of provisions, the redebatement provisions. I don't see a code provision that. Talks about redebatement, that is uh an annual program that you. You do by resolution.
Correct.
So. Are you? It is the intention of this ordinance to incorporate. To be explicit about incorporating unimproved. And improved properties in the redebate program. Is that part of your intention?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, well, there's.
You don't.
You don't, you don't, you don't say that. Anywhere in the draft ordinance.
There there is a separation, but there's a separation between this ordinance and our fire hazard fuel reduction program that targets open spaces.
And. Is the intention of this to give you the authority? To abate? Um. Fire hazards on improved properties?
Yes, however, again, just like General M was saying, is that we we have um. There 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 is more than one ordinance that we're using here, essentially, we're we're, again, if we're talking about complete fire safety, there's also the burning restriction and that are, that are. You might have them here, so there's another ordinance, this is just to. Again, uh kind of uh close some gaps that are in our, in our. In our ordinance that's going already, that we're not, that that are not uh particularly pointed out in our, in our redebate programs, yeah, so talk about the the um California Fire Code. And correct me if I'm wrong, chief, we have um land conservancy lots, there's preserves. That. Are not. Um referred to. But also can be a fire threat here in Cambria, so we we would look at, okay, well, what are the right redebate standards for a preserve? For um land conserved uh lots.
Right.
Which we we don't really have identified yet, and there are maybe members even in this room. That have properties that that are adjacent to some of these preserves, that are significantly concerned about the fact that there's. Oh. Um redebatement up to their property line.
Right.
Running right up against their house, so those are the types of things that we're also trying to expand on this award.
So they'll get rolled into this.
Absolutely.
Okay, I. Don't. Okay.
It's just, just a.
Um I I am I taking up too much?
No, no, I would do want to pause though, because just explain the order of things here, um. And we could, this, this, at this point, we ask, we're asking questions for information, this is kind of how how it's entered, the uh subject is introduced, topic is introduced. Um we ask questions, um actual discussion, uh which we'll have, comes after a break for public comment. And I don't know, you're you're asking, this is a good question time, but I don't want to um.
I I don't want to take up too much time, but I am concerned about. The the content of the ordinance, so that it's so that it's. Um inclusive and 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 explicit enough. So that you have the authority. To abate nuisance, attractive nuisances as they're defined by you. Um and I just want to make sure that that they're explicit enough in the ordinance that you have the authority to abate them.
So then you're saying we're going to have that discussion?
Yeah, I mean, if you want, yeah, if you want to add the language or correct language. That comes after the question, that comes after the comment, yeah, exactly. Because I think, I think I have, I have some suggestions in that area too, so. Yeah. Um but I think it isn't, it's good to get clarification on on what the purpose of this is, because we're not just defining, we're not. Defining our whole redebate in the pro- uh program. Here, we're we're, I I think I'm correct in assuming this, this is about. Making it. Clearly extending it to all parcels. Of all kinds, not just not just vacant parcels.
Correct, yeah, that's where our gap lies, yes, we we really only have the authority when it came to the fire hazard fuel reduction program for a short period, a short window. Um to go out and redebate these um open spaces that failed in uh the fire hazard fuel reduction program. And then we adopted the administrative citation program, we adopted the California State Fire Code, which gave us a little more. Room to act, but like the chief said, there's some gaps in our ordinance that we'd like to expand upon.
And 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 also, also though, the um the fact, the redebate program is a seasonal. Is defined by a time, it's a time period, this applies all the time. Right, this will follow at any point, somebody sees a hazard. Uh could be any time of the year, um on a developed property or any property, if it's reported to the fire department, we have the authority to abate it.
And and to to piggyback on top of that as well, we're we're not the first fire department to do this, the we, most of all of this came from the other entities that are in our county. I went to pass rules, I went to Tascadero, down to Caigus, I've been working with that chief venue with Cal Fire. Um to, because they're updating their accounting policies as well, so we're trying to be, make that, we're we're trying to maintain consistency throughout that county, and a lot of this came from that.
What's called clarification, um. You have specific um frontages. Um fifty feet from the edge of improved roadways. We have some very large lots that are multiple acres and um will your. Rear distance. Uh measurements or or requirements. Or will will they cover, will they be sufficient to cover an entire lot as large as it is, if you've got a twenty or a fifty acre lot? Of I I don't, there's some large lots back in the back of Limerick. That are still part of the district. And I'm wondering if if these uh. Provisions will give you the authority to abate nuisances far out into the. Farther out into those um uh lots.
Typically, what we're looking at, if they're, if they're large, if they're on the redebate program, and they're they're already in the the. Uh fire hazard fuel reduction program. Unless these exempt, any of those exemptions have been made, then.
You've got an improved lot.
Yeah.
You've got a whole bunch of property around.
Yeah, then we're not, no, we're.
So I want to, I I I just want to make sure that you have the authority. To abate all of the nuisances in a, in the largest lot of it, in the largest possible lot. Within the district boundary.
We don't have that, and then we're not looking at doing that at this.
You can't do that.
Well, not right now, again, to 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 redebate a fifty acre lot um is, I mean.
I don't know, what what I'm saying is, that you have the authority, if there's a, if if there is a nuisance issue to find it. Um are you, are you going to have the authority within the ordinance as it's, as you're proposing it? Uh to cover those. Uh beyond those larger, those larger lots.
Not beyond the fifty, no, I mean, if it's something that's. That's obvious, that's near a structure or threatening a structure, then yeah, absolutely, it would, it would meet the defensible space and and as defined in chapter forty nine, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't. Do anything of beyond the fifty foot. Uh guidelines, okay.
Any other questions, because I want to pick up some public comment, if there is any, um. I will move to public comment, we'll get back to the discussion afterwards, well, I have one attendee, uh I think it's probably Corinne. I had two attendees now, uh green space. Representing green space, um just a, just a reminder, you have a three minute limit, I will put. Green space. On. At this point. Can you hear uh?
Yeah, can you hear me, it's Corinne.
Corinne, yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Thanks, Tom, um. Two questions right now, number um one is. How will um? How will we get a copy of the updated ordinance? Right now, I just have the the previous one that was sent out.
Uh the the updated ordinance?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, thank you, we got the other speaker here, it should be on um on the website, right?
The the one that was provided last night, you mean?
Yeah, it should be, we we posted it on the um.
Oh, you you updated it on the website?
Yeah, you go to the website, uh for the meeting agenda page, should be posted there.
Okay, yeah, I didn't find the agenda either, so. That that was kind of my other questions, um. And um. Is this the public comment? Section now, okay.
Yes.
So. I I am slightly concerned. My uh our property manager, Mike Rice. Has been getting a lot of pressure. About Strawberry Canyon, Sterling Canyon, some of our other larger properties. Which are ashes under the coastal commission standards and have been. For many years with more than ten species of plants, ten wildlife that are protected. To um be part of this program that. Um would have, you know, the authority to go in and. Um do some abatement. Um not under our supervision or um, you know, supervised by us, I know Spencer is going to speak, again, I don't have. The agenda in front of me, but um. Uh. Mister Rice is telling me that you guys are requiring documentation that would show that these areas are protected. And I'm happy to provide that for you, if that's something that you want. These are longtime coastal commission ordinances. Uh and um I'm just curious what you would consider. To be um proper documentation to show that these areas are conserved and protected. Not just because of the NATO stands of Monterey pines, also the riparian areas and the understory. And the wildlife.
Thank you, I'll get, I'll complete pub- public comment, uh then we'll.
Sure. Okay, great, thank you.
We also have um Crosby and Laura Schwartz.
Uh good morning, uh Director Gray, this is Crosby. I submitted some written comments, I'll just zip over them for those of you that haven't seen them. The existing C C S D fire hazard fuel reduction program guidelines for vacant parcels are clear and straightforward. The proposed redebate ordinance should be rewritten simply to extend the fire hazard fuel reduction program to developed parcels. Further, we recommend revising the definition of weeds in section six point oh five point oh two oh by deleting the words. Including but not limited to grasses, bushes, shrubs, and trees. Which, of course, are not weeds. We further recommend revising. Section six point oh five point four oh A, B, and C. To replace the draft wording with the wording from the current fire hazard fuel reduction guidelines which I attached. Next question is, is county review and approval needed for specified tree removals and impacts to wetlands, streams. Riparian vegetation and terrestrial habitat protection as outlined in county code chapters twenty three point oh seven point one seven two. Twenty three point oh seven point one seven four. And twenty three point oh seven point one seven six. Lastly, we recommend adding the following words from the existing fire hazard fuel reduction program guidelines to section six point oh five point four. Quote, this annual requirement is an effort to reduce the fire hazard caused by the accumulation of combustible materials on vacant and undeveloped. On on vacant and developed parcels. Keep in mind that the forest helps to define Cambria, and it is important that we reduce the fire hazard without destroying its ability to regenerate. Make every effort to protect seedlings, young native trees, ferns, and bushes by marking them prior to cutting. Uh that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, anyone else um? Online wish to comment? Okay, I think we're done, take this back, bring this back to the committee. Uh for um discussion and a possible, and a possible motion.
Anyone here have comments?
Um I, yeah, anybody, just one more shot, one more, one more request of anybody who all know, thank you. I'm uh. Yeah. Yeah.
Based on a couple.
Based on a couple, um, comments I just heard, the California Coastal Committee have published a. Set of vegetation treatment standards in the coastal zone that they have approved. I don't know if you have copies of those, you might use those as a guide or reference, or what constitutes. Protected species and, and protocols of vegetation removal. This is a suggestion, I can provide those to you if you don't have them.
That'd be, that'd be, I was, I was, yeah, since, uh, you know, um, Corinne, um, asked a question too about. Specific to that, I wanted to, um, let, uh, Chief Burke here and Mr. Matt Laney.
Yeah, I'll let Chief, I wanted to, what we're looking for is exactly what Mr. Turner just said.
Yeah.
What we're trying to incorporate are those regulations and standards, so we do get questions about. When conserved preserves that we can say, yes, we're holding them to those redebated standards. There's just been, we just haven't had it in our ordinance in order to enforce those types of things. And so, um, I know there's some concern, I'm not exactly sure if the conversation that's occurring with Mr. Rice. Um, but I don't believe it's coming from the district as much as it, the district is exploring what those standards are and then trying to incorporate those standards into our ordinance. And so if there are restrictions on redebatement for any of these preserves, length and serve lots, whatever it may be, we wanna incorporate those standards into the ordinance and be able to reference a document like Mr. Trevor said.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, you, you basically said it all, that's kind of how I was interpreting this too, and we're, we're, the intention of this was not to. Said it before, we're not moonscaping Cambria, we're not trying, although that would make my job a lot easier, but we're not trying to do that. We're trying to, we're, we're trying to incorporate everything that we've been. Uh, every single one of us moved here for, which is the beauty and the, the, the environment that we live in or within. And we wanna maintain that to the best of our ability, at the same time, providing, you know, a level of safety for the residents that, that live here. And so I've, I've, I've been speaking with Corinne o- over the last year about this and, um, kind of, you know, talking with her and, um, and. Expressing that exact, uh, point of view. And so I, I, moving forward, you know, it, it's, it's, I feel like it's gonna be pretty simple after the first year, the first year might be a little, you know, hey, what about this area? Wanna make sure that we're doing exactly what General Manager just said, um, which is incorporating a lot of those into our ordinance, but at the same time. You know, there's a lot of areas that have not been, um, abated for a long time and, and we've, uh, you know, chat, people have come to me and said, why? And I, I don't have an answer, so this is trying to provide the answer, trying to somehow clarify this a little bit.
So I will take a close reading of all of these various ordinances and, uh. To make sure we're, we're consistent in language and practice, who's doing that?
It's for, now this, I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
We wanna incorporate, I mean, many of these comments, which we all, I think, agree were appropriate and relevant. How are we bringing, how are we bringing?
How are we making that it's in here?
Yeah.
Uh, that's a great question, I mean, I'm, I, I can, I can take them back, but I think for the most part, um. We have a. And I think the clarifying, at least from, from the clarifying question, as far as what documentation or what need in there, you know. Definitely add that in there, um, I don't know what the other. Exact change that we're looking for. I guess it just has to be voted on what, what changes we're gonna be made, need to be made, and then we can.
Yeah, I can make that happen. Just to get, kind of to kick off the discussion a little bit or to frame it, we're not trying to, um, go, go into a lot of detail, I don't think about procedure. Or, or, or even documentation, because we do have language in here about the exceptions, exemptions, um. You know, habitat for danger, threatened species, and so forth, that's all, it's already here. And I don't know if the ordinance, this text has to go beyond that in terms of what, what constitutes documentation sufficient to that. I think we have to keep it at a little more of a ten thousand foot level at this point. Um, just, I had one question maybe after the discussion, now I know it could change as they, um, having to do with definitions. You add a section on trees. And in the context of our, you know, fire hazard fuel reduction, which is new. But I'm, are trees referenced anywhere else in the, um, in the document? Cause I, I don't think they are.
Not anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then you remove the section, we remove that. This is still our, you know, it's still hazardous, hazardous trees are still hazardous.
The definition of weeds above, trees are in there.
Wait.
Uh, not even excluding trees.
Excluding trees is the problem.
Yeah.
I wonder if this, we should, we should, um, uh, I don't know, um. When you say, like, there, there is a specific under six oh five forty, uh, section B, there's a specific reference to weeds. And, uh, it could be that. That could also be expanded to include, um. Uh, trees, hazardous trees, I mean, the trees that are defined above.
I, yeah, I have a question, a question about excluding trees. I, I think it's inappropriate to exclude them, I think.
Just sort of, yeah, I would think it's, including, including trees, and what I'm suggesting is including trees in, um, six oh, six oh five forty, section B. I see now you're dealing with weeds. And then, um, dealing with trees. I think that's, um, um, something might, anyway, anyway, to go back, I'll take this back in the discussion by the, um, committee. As to what they wanna see done to the text.
Well.
Essentially, uh, this person.
I know you guys are trying to move this forward.
Yeah.
But this is really difficult, getting handed something that's completely different than what we were given before. And so I'm having a hard time, as art is, trying to figure out, you know, what's the new, what's the old, how does it, you, we read and all that kinda stuff. And it makes it difficult to ask proper questions or to ask, where we, you know, to make recommendations or anything about it, about any changes. So that's, that's, that's my, my first, um. Issue, uh, I, I, I'm gonna have a hard time making any motion to forward this, this point because of that. Um.
Can I follow up on that real quick, Dave?
So, so, so obviously, um, this was in the works before this committee was stood up. And so we were trying to move it forward, because we're gonna be heading into fire season before you know it, there's a thirty day lag time, um, I think there's a, um. A potential to take in some input today, uh, and I'll talk to Chairman Gray about. Is there a possibility for a special meeting to bring this back before deadlines for staff reports to get this to the next board?
Next one thing.
Hmm, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tight.
Is that, is that a possibility? I, I didn't understand.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would, it's not practical.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Um.
Sorry. Yeah, so, for the potential for a special meeting on just this agenda item later on in, um, March. But again, that'll have to be a board discussion and, and agenda review, but, you know, you're correct. This, again, this was in the works before the committee was stood up, brought it to the board, there's some questions about it, now it's at the committee level, and we're already working on changes. While this agenda was already posted, so it's moving quickly, um, but there's room for more discussion on it, I'm sure at the committee level. And then we can work on potentially a special meeting on board level if, if we need to push it.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with chapters. You know, chapter forty-nine basically references a lot of other stuff, right? So it's the defensible space stuff, and I'm pretty familiar with that from what I've done, but I'm not sure that the rest of the people on the committee are. Um, and, and they may or may not, um. Wanna review that before they decide, okay, these are improper standards and stuff, uh, or, or should we have more than fifty? And that, um, I have a couple of other. Um. Issues here, um, then the new one. Uh, let me see here, it's now under E. I don't know, it's, it's, uh, D, in order to qualify for any foregoing, an exception, given the property owners and possibility, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And with, under the sole discretion of our chief, as to the objective of the, and authorization of the exemption. No, no way that the property owner can appeal this decision, seeing as.
Where are you reading this? This is the top of, the, it's the top, the top of the.
So D, D falls to the bottom of the page, but it, it continues on H three.
From third page, the top there, is the new, yeah, go, go further.
Six point oh five point five oh five, about that.
Yep.
Yeah, one of my questions, yeah, so, yeah, so. I mean, I'm confident that he's gonna do the right thing, but a property owner. Who gets a negative reading from the chief should have somewhere else that they can go to, that they can appeal his decision, one man's decision. It's, it appears to me that should be something that should be at least discussed, um. For a question I had.
You missed time, right, yeah.
So under H. Yeah, is that the same thing?
It's the same thing.
Right, so D, I would try to D ordinate this.
Yeah.
Been very convenient if one would have highlighted the changes in the new one.
Yeah.
And, um, anyway, that's my comment is. I think there's such thing as, uh, forest managers and others that have expertise in what is appropriate exemptions, maybe the. Fire chief may or may not have that experience, I don't know what your background is on depth and knowledge or, uh, what weeds are weeds. Matter of fact, I've got a book that just came out from the Forest Committee that is just, kind of caught off the press. Available for twenty dollars donation, it tells you what weeds are defined by the Forest Committee, so it's just questions of, you know. Authorities from other areas that you may have talked with, what they define and that type of thing, we have our special vegetations that may be appropriate that. Needs to be, uh, eliminated, so I just wondered if we should have a second choice, like Davis and indicating that. Uh, needed to work with maybe Forest Committee, Green Space, and others that could have some influence of what they've been doing all these years.
No.
I, I take this to understand that it would be up to the property owner to bring that information to the chief, and the chief is then, can decide. So I don't see a question about how, I don't see a problem with this writing itself. Cause it'd be up to the property owner to prove that they are an exemption, and they can prove to chief, yeah, he said, you're good.
Well, I think, I think the discussion is about whether a chief should be the last word. I, I think.
Absolutely.
Like, there should be an, but, but it should be, but, but it needs to be an appeal to, um.
The board of directors.
The board of directors, yeah, and it would not be to any, any other entity, but, you know, that, if we go, if we go to change, basically.
Okay.
That, that would be the logic to me, yeah.
Quickly trying to read, uh, the ordinance, the abatement, trying to find out what abatement meant and what, what were the enforcement authorities, uh, currently in your code. Um, um, it, it elaborates, um, a, a method. If you were, if you were said, it will, this is different than assessing, this is different than assessing a pine. Um, and or, uh, a cost of abatement. This is an exemption. Um, so I, yeah, I agree, I think there should be some appeal or.
Yeah.
But you know, also the exemptions are specific and they're outlined, so if, um, green space, uh, wants to come with exemption, they're. They're not that many of them, but they will come well informed, so sometimes this opens up to. Every homeowner, because they are not clearly a, uh. Defined, or even loosely defined in the exemption, in the exemption language, gotta be, I suspect relatively few who can claim exemption. Do you agree?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and, and I, I've, every time that there's been an, an, any question at all, I, I definitely don't make the decision on my expertise at all. I've always been, even to the extent of, yeah, even to the extent of removing a dead tree and, and on our, some of our properties, I've always brought in bags of birds. To, to come in and make those decisions, I don't make it solely on, if we wanted to outline that in here, I think it would probably be a little bit. Unnecessary, but, um, I, I don't disagree with, you know, going to, to whatever we need to do to make people feel comfortable with a decision, and so they have an appeal process or whatever that is necessary, a hundred percent.
I just wanna play devil's advocate on that a little bit, I have concerns about delays to redebate standards. Opening Pandora's box with appeals, you know, for instance, and I'm not saying it's related, but we have nine hundred open space parcels that we have to redebate. If we allowed some appeal to those redebate standards, we would have nine hundred page agenda packets for those folks that failed their, their redebate. For the Fire Hazard Fuel Reduction Program, now I know this is a separate issue, and we do have the exemptions listed there, and, you know, we wanted to word it that the chief consults. You know, outside resources, foresters, whatever that is, and there's, and that is to be brought in there. But I do have concerns about operational standards that are set forth in the, in the ordinance, that the chief is now operationally responsible for enforcing policy. You know, and if the board sets policy to the ordinance, then he should have the authority to enforce it without having it be appealed. To the board, which causes delays and, in my opinion, public safety when it comes to redebate, and as we know. Fire season is year round now, you know, Cambria has a, a, a different climate, which gives us a little bit of a buffer compared to Southern California. But my opinion, any delay that requires a delay of a month to get to the board or two months, because we have to prepare staff reports, is concerning from a staff level. Um, I'm, I'm not saying that I don't trust our board of directors to handle an appeal, but when I talk, when we talk about delays to redebate standards, I always get concerned.
And, and, and a hundred percent, and they made some very strong points there, and, and to me, that, what he's talking about is delay in fire safety too. Because in the meantime, the law owners aren't cutting the blocks, and, and the longer that goes, the longer we have that threat. And so to me, that, that, that does provide a bit of an issue, um, and, and back to the exemption, so, uh. Okay, we, we, I don't want it to sound that, but the burden of proof would be on the law owners or the, the, uh, um, areas that are of concern. They would, would need to bring that information to us, you know, and, uh, and, and we would evaluate it and.
Then you wanna make that language in consultation with, you have the final authority in consultation with.
Absolutely.
With who, what, is it, this committee, is it?
Um, I mean, the.
Cal Fire, the Fire Safety Focus Group, just if you had some additional, uh, consulting party, I think you can address the concern.
So the language says, now notification shall be made to the fire chief and shall be under the sole discretion of the fire chief as the applicability and authorization of the exemption. Um. The notification, that's basically all that's requiring at that point from the, from them, to notify me, give me the information. And then, uh, allow me to make the best decision that we can for, for the safety, yeah. I think the, of course.
If you're having a problem on concerns about time, there is a time that we support or start the redebate, is that not correct? We go from whatever date to date, and if we don't make it, there should be a thirty day advance notice by anybody who wants an exemption, or it wouldn't be applicable for this season. Is what I would think.
And it does say that, right?
Yeah.
Assess the exemption at least thirty days prior.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but also this is, as I understand it, this is not specific, this is not just specific to the annual weed abatement, this is. If there's, if there's a hazard identified, um, it has to be dealt with right away. You know, even if it's not right in the, in that, in that framework of the annual program, so, and that's, I'm kind of inclined, um, listening to, um. The staff, uh, staff concerns, I'm, you know, I don't vote on this, so, but I, I can see why the, the, the value of keeping it the way it is, um, and. Basically, you know, putting up, obviously that one is on the fire chief to consult as needed. With whoever is appropriate to consult, but maybe a different, in, different entity, given the, you know, whether it's green spit, whether it's Strawberry Canyon or. Or just lot owner, um, it might be a different entity to consult with too, so I, I mean. That's rambling, yeah.
Um, just concerning, like timeframe, like everyone says they're on time, so I'm a homeowner, I see a potential, I think might be a threat or a concern. I fall or I go to his website, I go to the fire department, how long would it take for someone, fire department to come back and check on that, uh, initial?
That's a great point, and it just really does. That's a great point, and it just really does depend on what the, the, my workload is. And it typically is gonna be myself or any one of our fire captain said, I'm dumping this on. Sorry guys. Um, but that, that, the reality is exactly that, yeah.
Four days, whatever.
Yeah, so it's already going to be a delay. It's already gonna be timed. It, and it really just depends on what, on what. Like the schedule is definitely.
And then kind of go to the chief's defense, cause this is a. The chief and I wanted, I've been working on this ordinance for a while. We recognize the need for it, but we know we have opened Pandora's box.
Right.
It's already difficult enough for this. One chief to manage the fire hazard fuel reduction program in coordination with our fantastic firefighters. Now we've added developed parcels and an administrative citation program. We are in need of a flight marshal. We, we need another staff. And so. Um, that's gonna be a discussion, you know, at this committee at some point. It'll be a discussion with the board at some point. Uh.
So you're. I'm, I'm sorry to not.
No.
But, so we're gonna pass the ordinance before we have the resources to.
I, I wouldn't say that. I mean, I wouldn't say we'd have the report, resource to enforce it. I mean, it's just giving us the opportunity to enforce it. And yeah, I mean, it, it's gonna be. If you, if, if that's. I wouldn't say it's impossible because we're already getting the phone calls. Almost everybody is already, already calling me and telling me, hey, uh, uh, you know, identifying these properties. And so now I'll have the ability to do something about it. Whereas before I'm getting the calls, I'm still handling the, the concerns. I'm still going out and checking on those properties. As both, as well as I can. But now I can actually say, okay, now I can handle those for, versus telling the citizens that. Sorry, that doesn't really meet our criteria.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, to move things along, because we don't get, getting into an issue looking. Of the ability to enforce it. Uh, I would ask the committee, um, if they have any, just to keep it simple, anything, any areas. Particular areas of concern, things they want to get, had, had the board revisit or staff revisit before this is presented to the board again. Um, and make motion that, that I don't, I don't think we're gonna be doing a lot of um, close editing. Uh, obviously, but does anyone want to make some kind of a motion? To highlight uh, a request, make a request to work. Um, any sort of, you know, significant alterations in the content or the. And the wording, so we can just move it on. We're not, we're gonna cast all of our problems today, obviously. Uh, nothing to do with enforcement.
Well. One, another area that I think needs addressing. Is at the bottom of section six point zero five point zero one zero. The board of directors find and determines that the empty boat, both in our accumulation with weeds, refuse, and other discarded abandoned materials on parking lot streets, blah, blah, blah. Reduced property values promotes blight deterioration creates fire hazard. Unattractive. I mean, you broadened the scope of this. Past re-abatement. To people having an abandoned car, people having um. Uh, unkempt uh, shed that's falling down uh. Any, any of those things. Uh, what comes to mind is at the N C A C, there was a. A big hubbub about a property down on marine tourist that. Uh, the people weren't taking care of properly. Okay, so suddenly this is. You know, adding an awful lot of things to awaiting needed. Um. I have the same. Standards that are kind of, to me, outside of that. It, it may be needed, but it, I'm not sure that it needs to be as this particular.
I have the same question of concern. It was a little bit of mission creep into areas of uh. You know, beautification uh, and.
Yeah, well, reducing property values, now it's blight and deterioration constitutes an attractive nuisance.
It attracts from the power of this document when it kind of really led into more subjective.
Yeah, so.
Also, okay, so.
They might, you might want to consider, you know, adopting this as a we to be. Standard and then addressing these other items in a separate. Ordinance or something, or, or you better define those, those things a little bit better or something like that, as you define weeds and trees.
Any, any, yeah, any other, any other suggestions or proposals?
I would. Just, just to clarify. Are trees, are trees included? I mean, they're defined here, but are, are trees now anything is part of the abatement process? Uh, not just weeds and bushes, but trees also are concerned.
I would say yes.
We're talking about fireland or we're, you know, we're talking about, you know, the. The concerns of individual properties and whether, whether. My next door neighbor is not taking care of theirs. So if there's a wildfire, it's gonna go up, mine's gonna go up.
I think the uh, I mean. Chief rookie, I think he, or Mr. Macklin, I guess, second this, I think, I think the definition of um. Uh, hazardous vegetation, which is kind of incorporated in one nine, uh, four nine oh six, uh, section four nine oh six.
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, the one that is something incorporated in, um, I think it's the fire code section four nine oh six, it's hazardous vegetation. Category, which is pretty broad, which would include things like dead trees, dead shrubs and so forth, I think. In there is. Yeah, that's why I was asking about trees being specifically mentioned here, because he had a definition of trees.
If it's included on.
Yeah, but, but I think it, but I guess if I had to sum up what's coming out of this, I don't think there's gonna be a motion. Specifically, it doesn't have to be. Doesn't have to be. Um, what I'm coming, what's coming out of this is there's um. One uh, sense that's um. That maybe this is, the recitals are too broad, go too far in the beginning. Uh, and that's um. They haven't really. Um. I guess one other specific thing is there was discussion about the fire. Power to. You know, order. Um, I think we. And get him around full circle. Uh, and um, just the fact that it's. It seems to be um, not quite ready. I'm ready, ready for prime time somehow. I mean, it's, all these questions about it, because we, we, it, it changes word very last minute. Um, and I don't know where to blame, really, because we're. My question is, and I think we had a discussion a little bit when we, we're talking to.
The annual fire hazard reduction program is for not developed parcels.
Right.
Um. Obviously, the chief and I are concerned, uh, the community's concerned. Most recently, the policy is fired. Um, and we're worried about developed parcels. And so moving this forward, I believe it is our best interest, you know, for them. Be ready to, to deal with developed parcels and the concern. You know, the community doesn't hear it as much as we do, you know, sitting, sitting in our chairs in our office, but we did. Drilled, you know, we. We, we are, um, developed parcels of those issues. And so this is an important part in moving that piece forward in order to enforce some of that. Now we do have the administrative citation program. We have. Adopt. To the. Our code. But there, there are pieces missing, it just will delay, um, you know, the ability to enforce it, which will push us into. Fire. First thing before you know.
Yeah, I just. Comment to. In some. I think it's important that we adopt something. At this point, like take this one, I don't know, something like that, because it's important that you get the operation started. In my opinion, or something like that, is that possible?
We wouldn't be able to move, I mean. To Matt's point, um. I'm, I'm, I'm extremely concerned with, um, delaying this. Because of everything that we've talked about. Um, that's at the front of my, I, if, I'm not concerned about. Air protection not missing something. And so to me, I hear it all day long. Our crews hear it all day long about, and we get complaints constantly about these issues that we're trying to bring up in this ordinance. And so if I'm having to tell people, sorry, I can't do anything about that. Again, and again, and again, which I've already been doing. That's the entire reason why we brought this up. And it's been a long time. It hasn't, this hasn't been. Just this last couple of months or what? We've been working on this for a very long time. And so what we're trying to do is um. Trying to, and we can actually enforce these things. We can do something about it. And uh. Again, it, it, I don't have to explain the fire. Here, I don't have to explain the concern, um, but the delays become very, very concerning to me. And that's where I don't want to do that anymore.
Can we discuss um?
I think this is.
Implications of postponement, so, so. This doesn't go on the March agenda. It goes to the March fire protection. Maybe if we're fortunate enough that we can come to an agreement for a recommendation to the board, then it would be on the April agenda. For approval, but that thirty day window for implementation, we put it in May. Is that correct?
May asking question.
Yeah.
Where, where's advisory?
Right.
Um. Is, is it? I know we're, we're bound by uh. But with the fire chief about possible revisions outside of this meeting on angels to move things along. But I'm a, I'm a policy contract long, and so I have, you know, I. I look at things as very. Nudely. I don't want to.
Yes.
I don't want to put this process. I don't want to delay this. I don't want to delay the chief and this is enforcement activities. Uh, because I have silly questions.
Yeah, I, I think in, in theory, I guess you can. I guess maybe what I, what we're trying to do today is solve. Just to focus to really, really nearly solve the problem of being able to enforce. The current standards that are now applied to the undeveloped lots, to developed lots. Basically, can we, is it something, maybe the sense of the committee is that just, just focus on that? And, and, and.
Yes.
You know, and focus on that and just bring that, take that back to the board, say, you know, um, make sure that's done. We do have to move along uh, on this topic, so.
Well, my feeling is this is that we had an imperfect, imperfect document and, and our, our process, given that we got this so late is also imperfect. But that said, if this, if our, we're not. And it is delaying the implications of these programs, I, I vote to, I vote to approve it. You know, with all its warts right now.
Well, that's in motion.
Uh, I, okay, I saw, I saw move. I guess.
It's all discussion.
Can we, can we, do we have the ability to amend it at any, at any point going forward?
So that's, that's a good point. So um. We can take, as far as the committee goes, if we moved it forward, the committee wouldn't have an ability to amend it. But. The video, the self, it's recorded, some of the conversations that happened today, we take those comments. Um, suggestions, and what the chief and I would do was work on amending this for presentation to the board if that motion was to be approved.
Yeah.
I wanted to point out some dates that Haley um, identified in terms of the implications of not moving it forward. And again, that's the, the committee's decision. We wouldn't be able to get this enforced until June based on staff report deadlines. So. Even if we heard it at next month's committee, our staff reports for this item would be due the day before this committee meets. On the item that you're recommending. So in essence, you would have to hear it next month. We would have to wait another month to bring it forward, then a thirty day window for implementation. That would be June. So then we're really into.
Just before, yeah. Just, yeah, um, just to clarify, um, your mo, if, if it is a motion, it hasn't been seconded yet.
Well.
It refers to the latest version, right, of the uh.
Yeah, which I, again, which I have. Yeah, if, if subject to, to uh, incorporation of, of comments from this committee and from uh, public input. Uh, that, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, that these comments will be incorporated and presented before I, I, I move that we adopt the ordinance.
Do I hear, do I hear a second of that? I'll say. And move a second that we had, that we had recommended adoption of the ordinance uh, with um. On the understanding. Right, that uh, our comments, comments by board by um. Committee members. And other input.
And, and the public.
And the public at this meeting uh, will be uh, incorporated into the board's decision on the final adoption of the ordinance. Is that fair? Okay. Um, okay, take a vote. Um, for effort.
Yes.
Uh, Luca.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Pearson.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Charles, Mr. Chapman.
Hi.
Hi, and Mr. Heimrichs.
Yes.
In motion passes five oh, secretary will duly note the proviso. Put on it. Uh, we don't, I don't want to, yeah, we have time, uh, to deal with section uh. Item. Three B, I, I also, this. I'll. Posby and Laura Schwartz had raised her hand and I'll, just so they know. They had already spoken in public comment um, on this item. So that's why I wasn't picking him up. Unfortunately, but he has a chance, they have a chance to speak out in the next item, which is item three B. And then. Burner say for that, and I think we have Spencer, I might have, still have Spencer uh, Gordon, yes. Uh. See, which is to. Staff, I mean. From staff and give us a little uh. Preview that, sure.
Uh, agenda item three D discussion consideration regarding the slow moderate pine forest uh, restoration forest health grant number of understanding, consider providing recommendations to board of directors. Despite this meeting, we're recommending justice consider this forest health grant. Um, and Mr. Pearson can probably go into it a little better. We also have Mr. Turner. Um, I met both of them last week. In regards to this full health grant. And what it's gonna be able to do for us as a district, especially when you talk about the, the fiscal and branch. Um, as we know, our sources, sources department is resource, resource starve. Uh, and Mr. Agiri, who's present today along with his crews. Having worked diligently over the last year to refine our. Essentially our re-abatement um, and fire breaks on the ranch, hazardous trees. Um, brush, you name it. And so um, it's been difficult for them. Um, but with the aid of the Fire Safety Council and the State California Cal Fire, uh, who has awarded this large grant. Grant that is focusing on various different areas here on the North Coast, um, which we're fortunate to be a part of. They're gonna actually help us through that grant and their project managers, Mr. Gordon, and ranch maintenance. And uh, and we're pretty fortunate to have that. That's, that's a significant expense to the district that we will not be, I mean, took um, without being covered by the state. And with that, I can turn over to Mr. Pearson or Mr. Turner for more details and then over to, to Mr. Gordon.
Yeah, I think Dan's.
No, Dan and Mr. Turner.
Yeah, thank you. So uh, uh, good backgrounds. So there's been a lot of uh, forest restoration work occurring in the North Coast up here in moderate time, particularly. Um, been recognized statewide as a model for um. Restoration of moderate pine habitat, try to get it back to healthy conditions. And these forests would traditionally have fire crew every twenty, thirty years. Either through indigenous burning or from lightning fires. We'd open it up, uh, remove a lot of the understory. So there's sunlight got to the ground and then moderate pine itself is a fire adapted species. So you notice the cones of moderate pine stay on the tree even if it's dead. And the reason for that is they open when it gets hot or fire. And it drops the seed if it wants. Open sunlight to the ground, it wants. Um, no competition. That's what moderate pine likes. So over the years, fire protection and fire exclusion, those fires have. So we have this dense understory growth, which is not natural. And um, it creates a slow fire hazard. But more importantly, creates a significant health hazard for the moderate pine. Now, it's anchored in, it's got a question ball rest. It's got a door vessel to it. And a lot of that's due to the proximity, all those disease spread. By vectors that are distance. Um, think about it socially distancing. So the trees, if they're socially distanced, they have less and less spread of that disease. And the more trees are breaker, the more spread of the. So it, it is contagious. So project goal is to turn and force the healthy condition. This particular grant that we received, um, six point seven million dollars is in addition to some other work that's been going on here in, in the North Coast area. So. Um, Spencer Gordon's online, has been working Rancho Moreno, which is on the south. West part of the community here. West part of the community here, whatever Camp Ocean Pines, there's been previous work on the Coell Ranch, which is by the cemetery. There appear, there's been work done since Indian Point, and then uh the State Parks is done by the same same state. A lot of work going on, this is an adjunct to that, it's just an extension of those, so um that's kind of the background to this. What this uh MOU, this memorandum of understanding is, is essentially just trying to clarify role and responsibilities of the players in this grant. So the Fire Safety Council is the grantee, so we're the recipients of the grant and manage the funding, but there's a lot of other partners. So the um. Other towns resource conservation districts, Spencer Gordon, um Cal Fire, the grantee. Church Corporation, those properties on the Church properties, uh California Department of Fish and Wildlife, or the Cambria Ecological. Reserve, preserve, rather above the healthcare district office, Samuel Station, that's state fish and wildlife owned property. The uh and then Fiscalini Ranch, so you all own, is he owns the Fiscalini Ranch property? And then the friends of Fiscalini Ranch have. So those are partners in this process, and we have to coordinate on the resource consulting, which is a premier Monterey pine. Subject matter at conference in the state to manage the Monterey pine, so we get the best of the best and um. So what this is, is to lay out the roles and responsibilities of all those players. Lot of moving parts here, you might imagine, so it's important to everybody to know what the other party's doing. So it lays out that organizational structure, what each organization's role is, what did also enter the treatments that we anticipate. Anticipate doing on each of those properties, these maps that can show you where those profits are. So in the case of the Fiscalini Ranch, it would be work done specifically in concert with and under the direction of. Both the CSD and the President Fiscalini, so we would operating under the uh environmental impact report that's on file. Give us the environmental preferences for that, but it's also on the ground. Where, what, when, how, we we have trees, some of it is uh thinning, some of that understory work. Or understory conditions to get it back to that natural, one natural stand, back, and then there's some tree planting anticipated project. Try to extend this footprint of Monterey pine, back closer to its historical uh footprint, you know, that's. What this is about, it's a um memorandum of understanding, but it's just. Everybody understanding their roles and responsibilities, what's going on, you know, the party. So that's what we're asking for you to to kind, so you, so we know that everybody's on the same page or the same multiple.
I think that's the end. Any questions also? It's available, if any questions of them, of that of that anything, uh yeah, anybody um from the committee, the questions for uh. The Turner or? Anyone else? I would say just this matter of. Part of this MOU, our responsibilities are, I think, on page eighteen, eighteen is the agenda. Under Fiscalini Ranch Preserve Community, can be community service district team member, those are specific. Those are, that's what we specifically agree to do, uh in in our, in our case, not all these apply to us specifically. And this has to do, again, specifically with the Fiscalini Ranch, which is our property, as opposed to some of the areas that are outside of nowhere.
Yeah, so the fiscal, the the grant will pay for the cost of all the work, it's um your responsibility to. In the. To work with us on um what, when, where, how the property. Was called California Vegetation Treatment Programatics Environmental Impact Report. And then project specific analysis um done on all the other properties, again, Fiscalini is under EIR. Project, they all are the lead agencies, but the environmental approvals are in place. Um and approved, so it had coastal commission and other regulatory organizations, we've got Fish and Wildlife and Water Board. All the other regulatory organizations participated in the development of these environmental documents, so it cleaned with all of that. And uh now it's just to the implementation stage.
Who are the representatives?
Two people apparently.
Yep.
Who are assigned from CCSD to be the liaison, one I guess is uh, I mean, we're. We'll have somebody attending the team member meetings and then a backup person, I guess. We had those names, it's gonna be Mr. Gary or definitely Mr. Gary. Mr. Gary, yeah, myself. Yeah, my partner, the chief. Yep, yep. Team. If there are no more questions, oh, Mr. Heinrichs, yeah.
Under page thirteen, project management supervision, they're talking about agencies involved in community groups. Who is community group considered?
So we have.
You were sort of meeting that, yes.
Yeah, so the principal group we've been working through in the past, they've been fire safety focused group. And it's comprised of cross section of the community, because our intent is to try to, you know, put our. Um information you get it distributed as quickly as we possibly can. We meet monthly, so we typically give a monthly update on what's going on in other.
Groups that include the forest committee and green space groups at all or?
The green space and, pardon, green space and forest committee has been by say focused meetings.
That's the groups as communities. Supporting it from other people's angles.
Correct.
And then uh. They would be involved with the bi weekly meetings and too, or? Or it's just.
Uh probably not, just the principles to the um. Starts with bi weekly conference, it's called, we'd be the principals involved, all in this agreement.
Yeah. Uh Mr. Chad.
Any action? Were we? Is there any action that this committee needs to take on on?
Uh yeah, I I was gonna say the um, go to the title, the, it's a, it's a recommendation. Uh as to discussing consideration or recommending that the CCSD board directors uh enter into this MOU, so that's the. And the specific line. Yeah, uh regarding the, regarding the memorandum of understanding and consider providing recommendation, and the question is whether the CCSD should enter this MOU.
And.
Enter into the MOU.
You're asking for a motion from us to.
Recommend, yeah.
To recommend, we get that support for it, into uh the MOU.
Uh yeah, I, before we get to that, I want to um take public comment and then we'll come back to the discussion of a motion. Uh first of all, is there any public comment from anyone here in attendance? I have uh Riley McFarland.
Hi, can you all hear? Uh great.
Please go ahead, we can hear.
Thanks, you know, the connection's a little bit challenged on my end, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to uh introduce myself, um. Riley McFarland, a registered professional forester with Odden Resource Consulting. And we're the um RPFs on on this project and the authors of this MOU, so we've been working closely with Dan Turner. And the Fire Safe Council, um Fiscalini Ranch and David Agiri and friends of Fiscalini Ranch as well, and some of the other partners listed on the MOU, so. I just want to extend my um offer to answer any questions offline, um I think Dan Turner or someone at the meeting could hopefully provide my contact information, but. I'd be happy to um field any questions that anyone has offline, and I'll also be at the two PM pros committee meeting today, so. Um offering some of the same in insight.
Thank you, thank you, yeah.
If if I might, I know. Is a a registered professional forester, works for Odden Resource Consulting.
Yeah.
So he's the principal uh registered forester that's working on this project, uh has been engaged with. Uh the Monterey pine operation here for several years, so well versatile ruling here and is a. A subject matter expert for implementing to the research project, he will frequently be hands on his person. Oh, I covered that, okay, Riley.
Yeah.
That that sounds great, Dan, thank you for filling that in, thanks.
Crosby and Laura Schwartz, okay, thank you, I'm sorry, sorry. Sorry, okay, thank you. Crosby and Laura Schwartz.
Uh thank you, Chairman.
Be there still. Having trouble with the um.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Oh, I can, I can hear you now, yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying minor comment, but kind of points out the necessity of reading some of this stuff very carefully. I'm looking at the, on page, I think it's page twenty four, Slow Monterey Pine Forest Coalition Forest Health Project. And on page twenty five, it talks about thinning, pine retention. Live oak retention, shrub retention and pruning, under pruning, it says, in order to eliminate ladder fuel concentration to reduce the fire hazard. Residual trees slash shrubs should be pruned to a minimum height of six feet above the ground. And there's no mention of the height of the tree or plant that you're pruning, so in other words, you could be, have a five foot high tree and you're limbing it up to six feet. This does not, this makes no sense at all, uh the the wording that's in the. Uh Fire Hazard Fuel Reduction Program Guidelines that we referred to before says. With much better wording, it says, remove ladder vegetation from under trees and shrubs, maintaining six feet of vertical clearance for trees greater than twenty feet in height. You have to put something like that in, otherwise you'd be, you know, pruning up uh three foot high vegetation, and that's my comment, thank you. Silence.
Yeah, we're trying to uh get a better connection. Kinda, please continue, I think, I think we just got a better connection.
Oh, okay, I, no, I was uh finished my comment, saying that on page twenty five, it states to limb up all vegetation to a minimum of six feet. Even if the height of the vegetation is less than six feet to begin with, so you you need to put some kind of a a cap. Some kind of a guideline on it, like they do in the Fire Hazard Fuel Reduction, where they say limit up to six feet for trees twenty feet and over. That that's approximately the the ratio of of limiting that's considered adequate.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sorry about that connection problem. I mean briefly, uh Dan or Mr. Turner, you wanna address that at all about the six foot?
Sure, I could address that.
Yeah.
So this is a synopsis of what a hundred fifty page document says, so I understand the comment. Uh I would just say that the guidelines also say pruning sixty feet or six feet, but no more than a certain percentage of the live. Crown ratio of the tree, so it would take into account those, the concerns, I believe, that the. Speaker had there as far, no, we're not gonna prune five foot trees.
I mean, isn't generally, you put in the lower third or something like that? Correct, yeah, correct, yeah, thank you, uh I'll bring this back to the committee now for, if there's, if there's no more public comment. For discussion and emotion, and I think the uh Mr. Chapman's uh.
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh so regarding uh item three B, um I move that the committee recommends to the community. The Cambria Community Services District Board of Director to approve and enter into the slow. Monterey pine restoration forest hill rant, number eight G G two three six one seven. Miranda memorandum of understanding, okay.
Good job, okay, is there a second? You don't have to repeat everything. We need to ask in a second by Mr. um. Tony Stafford, uh that the, we have, we recommend that the CCSD board of directors. Uh enter into the um slow Monterey pine restoration forest health grant program um. Uh as do, as Mr. Chapman described.
Did, we have a second.
And we have a second, yeah, Mr. Stafford, so I'll take a roll call vote, um Mr. Chapman. Roll call.
Do I call for the vote?
I'm calling for the vote, yes, I'm calling for the vote.
Okay.
Hi, hi, Stafford.
Hi.
Mr. Heinrichs.
Hi.
Mr. Pearson.
Hi.
Luca.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, thank you, thank you, Turner and all the people who showed up to uh. Watch the process and help us out, uh I will briefly um. They have, they have feature agenda items and uh. And I think we um don't have a lot of time to spend on this, but I I did want to get um, if anybody has any. Agenda items at the next following meetings, just trying to bring them up. I would, I was prefaced this by saying that we're gonna have our CCSD is gonna have its annual strategic planning session. Um in uh, we can have, I guess, now.
March third.
March third, yeah. Potential for the fourth, the potential for the fourth, we will be taking up um obviously fire protection. Um goals and objectives and they will have, obviously have quite a bit of influence in what we do as a committee, so. With that in mind, um I'll just ask, you know, any, any member of the committee now, if there's some specific things they'd like us to look at. And and put on the agenda for the future, knowing that it might actually be covered in the uh board's um. Decisions as as to this strategic plan, and also remembering that we are advisory of the board, we do not go off on a direction that has not been set for us by the board. So we have to, you know, be that right in the mind, but then Mr. Luca.
I'm curious, um evacuation zones for different areas of town, I know where I live, it's one way in and one way out, it's like, it's like kinda.
Evacuation routes or?
Routes or zones. And whatever encovers it, cause like, yeah, we're at a dead end, so.
I have a feeling we'll be doing that, but that's, that's the kind of thing where you. We'll have subcommittees too, we will be having, we will be appointing um um two or three subcommittees, I think.
It was one of my same comments was evacuation plans, as we could relate to what uh. As Lieutenant Marin County possibly has some advisory activities.
Their roles.
Support.
Yeah.
Fan efforts.
Anyone else?
I need a fire marshal.
Fire marshal, okay. Yep.
Generally, community preparedness.
Yeah. Sure wish to see a website dedicated to that, to preparedness, including evacuation. That someplace to centralize this information so it's available to the community, also. Um I think it's going to be really important to be, to be crystal clear about. What the requirement, what the, the abatement requirements are for improved properties now, because that's going to be brand, that's brand new. And although Cal Fire has responsibility for it, they didn't do anything, so um it. Putting those standards, those requirements out specifically about. The height of trees and the height of bushes and the distance of the crown of a tree, you know, from a house, all that's, all that stuff that. Cal Fire and and other agencies, it's now incorporated in 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 forty nine. It's gonna be critical that we communicate that out to the community.
Yeah.
Am I allowed to make suggestions? I think that would be, yeah, worth the future discussion.
Okay, thank you, yeah, sure. So uh three things, and hopefully this is an appropriate uh platform to bring it up to you, but three things that concern within the district. Uh as far as the fire department is concerned, one is funding for uh not only employee salaries. But then also funding for a fire engine and then fu- funding for um our uh our station as well. So those three things, I don't know if we want to lump them up together into one topic or separate them out, but those are three things that I definitely want to address at some point. I feel there'll be a third, there'll be, there are three, three subcommittees, one will probably be on fire, firefighting resources. You know, in all respects, okay, one will be on uh community engagement, uh or and well, let's say, let's say. Um wildfire protection, wildfire prevention, protection, and then community engagement, especially in things like evacuation. Uh or response, you know. They'll work on that, but they'll be, they'll be, that's kind of one of the, there's some core areas, but they're obviously kind of jump out. As something we'll be doing, and so consider the next, next month, uh if you want, if there was a committee. Consider the next, next month, uh, if there was a committee. On one of these issues, which, which one you particularly like to serve, serve on, because it sounds like there's, you know, always a lot of interest.
So it might be a good idea at the beginning of our next meeting for the chief to explain to us where he is in his planning process. That he's ongoing with accounting and everything. So that he can, so that we are starting with that level of knowledge that this is where he's at and is planning. Then. We're not going to try to change your, you know.
Are you specifically to evacuations or just emergency preparedness?
Compared generally, yeah.
Interested in knowing what the. Purpose of this work is, what the goals and objectives that the, that the, that. That the board of directors has for us, what they need from us, what are, what are you, how are we going to be useful to the board?
To answer to that question, when is that the actual description of the committee's responsibilities, it's going to be. Uh, it's being updated and, and somewhat, you know, rephrased and impressed, so it'll go on, that'll be on the March the, the agenda, I assume. And the strategic plan, uh, will have some marching orders for us probably on some level. Um, based on what we, our responsibility, but that's, does that be helpful?
That should be clarified, that will be clarified in the next few weeks.
Any other future agenda items, I'm going to bring up. Thank you, none, I'll adjourn the meeting at twelve twenty-one.